for November 21st, 2017. Invite you to stand if you choose while Fire Department Chaplain Kevin Lashley provides your invocation, followed by Commissioner Sue Paragon leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Kevin?
Let's pray. Father, we love you. We thank you again for this day and this opportunity. Father, we ask your blessings upon the meeting tonight. You will bless all that's said and done, and we pray, Father, that you will give these individuals the knowledge, wisdom, and understanding to discern what they need to tonight. Father, we pray for all that is on the agenda. We pray for the promotions and that you will just bless them and the departments within the city as well. Again, we give you all honor, glory, and praise, and we pray this in the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance. The United States of America, and its true republic, and justice stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Nash?
Here.
Commissioner Paragon?
Here.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Commissioner Denny?
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Here. Mr. DeFebbe, do you have any words or recognitions tonight?
I do not, Mayor.
Any member of the Commission? Well, we do. On behalf of the Commission, occasionally there's, or seldom, the opportunity to have a chance to recognize an individual's done so much for our community over many years. And Commissioner Denny brought this to my attention as we consider what the Corvette Homecoming, the National Corvette Homecoming, has meant to this community for many, many years. And I know that Joe and Vera Pruitt here tonight, and they're retiring from that opportunity, and we wanted to make sure that they understood that the city is so grateful for what they've done over the last many, many years in bringing that event to our town and what it means to us, helping define our identity here in the city of Bowling Green. So if you'll permit me to read this proclamation, and then when I get done, we'll invite you right up here, and I'll give it to you. But on behalf of the city of Bowling Green, this proclamation is, whereas the National Corvette Homecoming began in 1981, when the Corvette Assembly Plant moved to Bowling Green, Kentucky, bringing visitors and Corvette enthusiasts to our city yearly; and whereas Joe and Vera Pruitt became co-owners of the event in 2001, and sole owners in 2004, doing a fantastic job of keeping the National Corvette Homecoming fresh and fun; and whereas the National Corvette Homecoming has evolved into one of the best Corvette shows in the country, offering six car shows, road tours, speakers, seminars, vendors, and exhibits; and whereas each year, folks from around the country and world travel to Bowling Green, Kentucky, to visit with old friends and make new ones; and whereas the city of Bowling Green is fortunate to have Joe and Vera Pruitt dedicate so much time and energy, bringing the National Corvette Homecoming to Bowling Green year after year, now therefore, we the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim November 21st, 2017, as Joe and Vera Pruitt Day in Bowling Green, and thank them for their dedication to this great event since 2001. And if you'll meet me at the podium here.
Thanks, Mayor and Commissioners. This is very, very nice, and we accept this very humbly. Some of you know what it takes to do one of these things. Some of you don't. But sixteen years battling all the elements and everything that goes along with it, it's time for somebody else to take this over. It's '74. I've got more summers behind me than I do ahead, and I want to be able to take that Corvette that we've got now and drive and have some fun. But we have enjoyed it. We didn't, I didn't realize many, many years ago I'd wind up in tourism, but that's exactly what we have wound up doing for all these years. So, once again, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. and Ms. Pruitt. Thank you.
Did you want to say something?
Are there any other recognitions? All right, Mr. DeFebbe, you have comments tonight?
Yeah, one comment. I'd like to withdraw item number six to give the Commission's additional time to look at the issue. We received some new information that we need to study from the staff point of view, so I'd like to withdraw that item with your courtesy.
Yes, sir. Else? All?
Pardon?
Anything else?
No, that's all. Thank you.
All right. We need approval of amendments for our regular meeting on November 7th, 2017.
I'll move.
Motion by Paragon, second by Nash. Are there any deletions, corrections, or additions? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2017-229.
Municipal Order approving the promotions of Brian E. Chambers to the position of Assistant Fire Chief, Mark E. Carver to the position of Company Commander EMT, and Christopher M. Curtis, and Merv D. Hochstetler to the position of Fire Apparatus Operator EMT in the Fire Department.
Moved. Second.
Motion by Nash, second by Williams. Mr. DeFebbe?
Thank you, Mayor. I asked Jason Coulson to come forward to put his recommendations for promotion before the Commission. Jason?
Mayor and Commissioners, it is, again, my pleasure to be here this evening, presenting recommendations of promotion to you for four positions within the Fire Department: Assistant Chief of Prevention, Company Commander, and two Fire Apparatus Operators. Promotional testing for each of these positions was recently completed, with two members completing the process for the Assistant Chief of Prevention, three members completing the process for Company Commander, and sixteen for Fire Apparatus Operator. Based on the results of the promotional testing, as well as their performance throughout the course of their employment with the department, I am pleased to recommend Brian Chambers for promotion to Assistant Chief of Prevention. I'd get Brian to kind of stand as I call your name, that'd be great. Mark Carver for promotion to Company Commander, and both Chris Curtis and Merv Hochstetler for promotion to Fire Apparatus Operator. And if you would allow me, I'd like to share just a brief bio to recognize a few of the accomplishments of each of these members. Mr. Chambers was hired in 2006, who promoted to Fire Apparatus Operator in 2011, and has been a Company Commander with our organization since 2015. Brian holds an Associate's Degree in Fire Science, as well as numerous certifications that have been vital in preparing him for his new role, such as Fire Officer One. He's a Certified State Fire Instructor, Level Two. He's a Certified Incident Safety Officer, as well as a Fire Inspector. Additionally, Brian has attended supervisory classes through WKU's Career and Workforce Development, and also Brian helps educate others by working as an adjunct instructor for state fire rescue training. He has served on numerous committees and projects. Most notably, he has been coordinating the department's cancer prevention program, which is extremely important to us, and has also organized the department's MDA fill-the-boot campaign for the last five years, which had raised nearly $100,000 during that time. So we applaud him for those efforts. Mr. Mark Carver earned a Bachelor's Degree in Finance from WKU prior to coming to work for us in 2008. He was promoted to Fire Apparatus Operator in 2014. Mark, as well, has completed numerous certifications recognized by the department, as well as attended courses outside of our department, such as Alabama Fire College. He's a Certified EMT and instructor, and also a Fire Inspector. Mark has also been a part of the various projects, most notably overseeing the maintenance and repair of our department's breathing apparatus, so we find that very important. Mr. Chris Curtis, he earned a Bachelor's Degree in Biology and Public Health from the University of Cumberland in 2006. He began working for the city shortly thereafter in 2007, and has advanced to firefighter two in 2011. Chris is a Certified Paramedic. He's also a state-certified instructor and a Fire Inspector. Additionally, Chris is prepared for his new role as a Fire Apparatus Operator by recently completing credential certifying him as a Fire Apparatus Driver. And last but not least, Merv Hochstetler, he was hired in 2013. He has also obtained all his basic certifications and credentials as a Certified Career Firefighter. Additionally, he's a Certified EMT, and he too has recently completed credentialing as an apparatus driver and operator. During his tenure, Merv has been very active in our technical rescue program, completing certifications as rope rescue, trench rescue, and as a swift water rescue technician. Mayor and Commissioner, it is my pleasure to recommend each of these individuals to you for promotion within the Bowling Green Fire Department. Thank you.
I'll answer questions. We all look this direction, just in case Joe wants to dump on anybody here.
I pretty well know them. They're good guys, and we're lucky to have them. What people need to know that live in the city limits of Bowling Green is that we have got one of the finest fire departments anywhere in the state of Kentucky. Not only can they put fires out, they're educated to do other things as well, which puts us at the top of fire departments in the Commonwealth of Kentucky. So we need to be proud of what we've got. When we see something burning, a house on fire, hopefully there are not very many, but at least we have got a staff that know what they're doing when they get there.
Comments? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Congratulations, Mayor. I know there's quite a crew over here. We'll give you just a second if y'all want to filter out.
If you had a fire somewhere now, we'd have to do it. Hold up. House would be gone. Katie, you sound all right. You kind of hit the right buttons. I'm glad.
I do.
Bruce said something, too.
Municipal Order 2017-230.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointment of Amanda C. Cannon to the position of Financial Specialist in the Finance Department.
Moved. Second.
Nash, second by Denny. Mr. DeFebbe?
Thank you, Mayor. We recently had an opening occur in our Finance Department, Position of Financial Specialist. We advertised and had forty-two individuals show interest in serving the city. From that process, it was our choice that Amanda Cannon be chosen. She has a Bachelor's Degree in Accounting and up to four years' relevant experience. Jeff speaks highly of and recommends her appointment to you.
I'll answer your questions. I think Ms. Amanda's here. Would you mind standing so that everybody can see you as well? Thank you so much. Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Congratulations. Municipal Order 2017-231.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointment of Marcos A. Gonzalez to the position of Labor Two in the Public Works Department.
I'll move. Second.
Motion by Paragon, second. By Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. We recently have an opening in the position of Labor Two. We did an advertisement. We received forty applicants for the position. We distilled the group down to six interviews, and from that process, Mr. Gonzalez was viewed to be the best candidate. It's our hope that after his appointment as a Labor Two, he will go through the books and the training and get his CDL and be a Technician One eventually. But I think Marcos is here.
Over to it. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Congratulations to you as well. Municipal Order 2017-232.
Municipal Order approving revisions to the Risk Management Manual for the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky.
I'll move. Second.
Paragon, second.
Thank you, Mayor. Just like our cadre positions of police and fire in our Safety Risk Management Division, we also try to operate through use of SOP. Briefly, I would like for David Weisbrod to come up and give you a brief overview of the changes that we've made to our risk management. Most of them are nominal, but it's important for you all to know what David's doing with risk management. David?
Mayor and Commissioner, it's good to be here. Basically, we're looking at annual revisions. We do this every year. We review our Risk Management Manual, and this happens to be a chapter that we have added to that manual. It includes provisions to, on how especially our public safety personnel, and how to address situations where someone may be suspect of having an airborne pathogen. And it basically just provides protocol for them to know how to safely handle a situation involving such.
Questions or comments from Mr. Weisbrod?
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2017-233.
Municipal Order accepting the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the period ended June 30th, 2017, as prepared by the Department of Finance and audited by Mount Joy Chilton Medley LLP.
So moved.
Nash, second. By Williams. Mr. DeFebbe?
Thank you. As the Commission knows, and the public hopefully knows, that in 2006, we created an audit department, internal auditor, as well as an audit committee. One of the functions of that committee every year is to review our audit and to give the public their imprimatur of acceptance of the document. We're here to do that tonight. I would ask Deborah Jenkins to come up and introduce the head of the committee this year. Deborah?
Each year, whenever the annual audit is put together and packaged by the Finance Department and then audited by our external auditors, we have changed the process to where our audit committee are the ones that review that. They meet each year, and they'll go through a thorough review of it. Within the committee, we have two people that are auditing and accounting experts, or they have a background in that, and then we also have general business members. And one person from the Commission will sit on that, which is currently Commissioner Denny. At this point, we did meet earlier this month to review the report that ended for June 30th, 2017, and we have Tony Witty, who is our current Chair of the Audit Committee, that is here to give you a little bit more information about that meeting.
Mayor and Commissioners, the Audit Committee of the City of Bowling Green met on Monday, November 13th, to review the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, also referred to as the CAFR, for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2017. This was presented by accounting firm Mount Joy Chilton Medley LLP. After review of the report, we can state to you that once again, the City of Bowling Green received a clean opinion with no material misstatements. Also, the representatives of Mount Joy Chilton Medley were very complimentary of the entire staff of the Accounting and Finance Departments and their work in preparing the statements and documents for the audit and throughout the process. The Audit Committee unanimously passed a resolution approving the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, and in that resolution recommends to the City of Bowling Green Board of Commissioners that they approve the report as presented. Any questions?
Any questions or comments for Mr. Witty?
Outstanding board, Mayor. Individuals that are members of that board, of course, are taking time off from their daily work routine, and as I've said before, and it comes from the heart, I think Deborah does an outstanding job of keeping us informed and providing us the material as members of the group. And I don't think that we, as a city, could ask citizens to do more than what this group of individuals are doing for us. Of course, that $1,000 a month per them that they get helps a whole lot.
That was on the down low, Joe.
Outstanding group of people. Enjoy working with them, and Deborah, keep up the good work.
One question. Deborah, the expert that you referred to, was one of those Tony?
He is actually one of our general business members.
There you go. There you go.
He probably is expert.
A Lakuanian, had to ask.
Financial advisor for Wells Fargo's and knows how to deal with big numbers, so we appreciate your expertise in taking a look over that. Is there any other city that has an audit committee?
There's some larger cities. Louisville and Lexington, we're the third. I think we tried to germinate the idea. Covington, has it taken seed there? Deborah, do you know?
Four of us.
Yeah.
Yes.
So there are four of us now.
One thing that I've got to say, I appreciate the work of the Audit Committee, but, you know, equally impressive, the entire financial report in itself is just quite well done. And I applaud the Finance Department, as well as the Audit Committee, for doing this. And any citizens that has a question at all about the financial situation and how the city spends its money, if they want a good read, it'll take a weekend. Take a look at this financial report. So, thank y'all very much for what you do.
With that being said, it might be helpful for Jeff, just to give a brief overview how we did this year compared to last year, and the people who are primarily responsible for that, what Rick is saying. Jeff?
I'd like to thank you, Commissioner Williams, for the kind remarks, and we had a good year. We tried to consolidate as much as we could in the memo that Aaron Blue wrote, and I'd like to thank Aaron for putting all this together. She is the main author of this two, what is it, 160-some-page document, that along with some assistance from the rest of the finance staff. So, we do this in-house now. We didn't used to do this, and as of a few years ago, Aaron took it over and does a great job with it, and I'd like to commend her for her good work. I can't take any credit for this document much. I write a few things in it, but Aaron puts it all together, so. We had a good year. Our fund balance increased, the general fund, about $4 million. We still have that ugly net pension liability coming from CERS that went up about $5.3 million this year due to the changes they made with the assumption rates and all that kind of stuff, but that is reflected in the financial statements. We still have an overall positive net position of $180 million. I would like to note that we have paid down our debt outstanding. In the last nine years, we paid roughly 37% down on our debt, and we're down below $90 million on outstanding debt. In FY09, we were at $150 million in debt, and that's something that I've tried to focus on since I took over as CFO. We got really nasty comments from Moody's about our pay-down ratio, and I think we've done a great job of getting a hold of that situation with not issuing any new debt and trying to get refinancings in place, saving as much money as we can in paying down that principal. So I'd like to commend everybody for their part with that, too. So, just like to thank the Audit Committee for watching over this with us and being that independent body that they are, and also like to thank Mount Joy Chilton Medley. They're a very good audit firm to work with, and they've done a good job at getting us where we need to be. So, thank you to everybody.
Congratulations.
Jeff, one or two questions, probably only one. With what we are seeing with the Commonwealth of Kentucky, and its lack of looking down the road for Kentucky retired employees, I know what we already did earn, but is there some document that needs to be developed now along the line to say that we, as city government, will always do whatever is necessary to make sure that our retired employees get what they are due when they retire? Now, I realize that we can't look out 50 or 100 years from now and say what is going to take place. Point is, and personal point for me, even though I'll be dead and gone, I never want to see a Bowling Green, Kentucky city employee retire and have to worry about whether or not they are going to get what they are entitled to. And I asked that in 2017, what we need to do. If a person retires, and the key word is retire, that they get what they're entitled to from the City of Bowling Green as a part of their retirement program, whenever that is.
Try to answer that question. I will say that the city has done their part, and probably more, at making, well, we've made every one of our employee contributions over all the years, and I think all the other cities have too. And what the solution is, I don't know, and a lot of this is out of our control, but we have always done everything that we're required to do under the CERS rules. We pay in our leave when people retire. Mike can speak to that, too. We have the, sometimes we have to pay the required extra bills for retirement with the spiking that they accuse us of, that we try to fight, but we can't fight all the time. But it's a huge challenge on what the future holds, but I think the city's obviously going to, you know, comply with what KRS tells us to do and what we're supposed to pay in. And with that being said, with the latest estimates we've seen, we're looking at a huge increase in that payment coming up in the next fiscal year that we're going to have to address, so. I feel like we're doing everything we can, though. So, I feel like we're doing everything we can, though.
And that in other governments, state governments and other places, if everybody would place as much concern on looking out for their fellow citizens and fellow workers rather than being concerned about when they're going to be, reach the time where they get a chairmanship of some committee, then things would be better. But I just want to make sure that our employees, when they retire, that they get everything they're entitled to, regardless of the department. And regardless of what we, as the city government, may have to put in a part or whatever the proper procedure to make sure that that person gets what they're entitled to.
Is it possible for us to make this available online?
Sure.
It is online.
It is already online.
We've got 10 or more years out there.
Great.
Amen.
Could we move it to the featured links for a short period of time? So, if people wanted to come find it following the meeting, they could?
There will be another condensed, colorful version of this report called "A Popular Annual Financial Report," our PAFR, that will be out soon at a theater near you. But we should have that available here in the next couple of weeks, hopefully by the holiday party that's here in a couple of weeks. And that's a much easier read. It's got charts and graphs, and it tells the same story, pretty much mostly focused on the general fund, but we'll look for that to come out soon, too.
It's more like the Reader's Digest version.
It is. Thank you.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Ash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Witty. Appreciate it. Municipal Order 2017-235.
Municipal Order Authorizing and Accepting Bid Number 2018-05 for Paddock Way Drainage Improvements Project from Scott & Ritter Incorporated of Bowling Green, Kentucky in the amount of $93,235.
Go move.
Second.
Perigin, second. By Dunning.
Thank you, Mayor. As the Commissioner remembers, we have three main priorities as a political body. The first is paving, the second is sidewalks, and the third is stormwater. We're here tonight to present another stormwater project. I thought it'd be important for Greg Meredith to come forward and give the public an idea of how these projects work and what we're trying to do with them. Greg?
Mr. DeFebbe, Mayor, Commissioners, this is another in our long line of storm mitigation projects. This one in particular is addressing drainage concern on Paddock Way. Paddock Way, of course, is off Thoroughbred across Campbell Lane from Bowling Green Junior High. During heavy rain events, the ditches fill up, and they stand for a length of time. This project will install culvert pipe and remove that drainage more quickly to a basin that's back off Churchill Court that's existing. And so, hopefully, this will make a real difference in terms of the stormwater there on Paddock Way.
Questions for Mr.? Thank you for Chestnut Street. We appreciate that. Please call the roll.
Ash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2017-236.
Municipal Order Authorizing and Accepting Bid Number 2018-15 for Brownfields Assessment Grant from NSAFE Incorporated of Bowling Green, Kentucky in the amount of $286,000.
Go move.
Commissioner, remember, we talked about how we were going to evaluate brownfields in our community. We're here tonight to select the professional services we need to help do that process. I think it'd be helpful for Nick to come back up and give you an overview of what we're trying to do and why we chose NSAFE. Nick?
You, Mr. DeFebbe. Mayor, Commissioners, last month, the city accepted $300,000 EPA Brownfield Assessment Grant to conduct environmental assessments on former commercial and industrial properties that are potentially contaminated to encourage the redevelopment of those properties. The next step in the process is to procure an environmental consulting firm that is experienced with the EPA Brownfield Regulations and experienced with implementing Brownfield Programs. So, the city advertised a request for proposals. We received six responses from firms. A committee of four city staff members each independently reviewed and scored each proposal. In the end, NSAFE had the highest score of all the firms that submitted. NSAFE is a national environmental consulting firm with years of experience with managing Brownfield Programs. Also, NSAFE has a local office here in Bowling Green for a number of years. So, they obviously have a good understanding of our community. So, we feel like NSAFE has the expertise to assist the city with successfully implementing this program. So, tonight, we're requesting your all's acceptance of NSAFE's proposal in the amount of $286,000. This amount is within our available grant budget, and also, it would be paid for entirely with grant funds. So, at this point in time, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
We do not have prices. Any prices on the other? Nick? On the back page?
I'm sorry, we did not provide that. Actually, the criteria for the bids was really three separate items. We did 40% based off of experience, 40% based off of scope of services, and 20% based off of price.
So, what happened to the other companies listed? I mean, I'm confused. How come we don't have a number for them?
Based on this being a request for proposals and cost is not the only factor, the bid tabulation does not include prices. Traditionally, that is how we presented all request-for-proposal bid tabulations without dollar amounts, because it's not the only factor that's considered as part of the evaluation.
Please call the roll.
Ash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
2017-237.
Municipal Order Authorizing and Accepting Bid Number 2018-28 for Lampkin Park Asphalt Path from Scotty's Contracting and Stone, LLC of Bowling Green, Kentucky in the amount of $251,197.50.
Go move.
Second.
Second by Nick.
Reflect, again, our focus on our priorities. We want to make Bowling Green a more walkable community. I want to especially focus on those areas of the community in which there are no connective paths or sidewalks. Under Brent's Neighborhood Improvement Program, we're trying to fill some of those voids. So, I'd like for Brent to come up and talk about how this particular municipal order fulfills that goal that this commission has established in its planning process. Brent?
Thank you, Mr. DeFebbe. Mayor, Commissioners, y'all have heard me talk about 105.2 for a number of years now. This is our first project in our new neighborhood improvement area, 112, Census Track 112, which is roughly Old Morgantown Road to Old Barren River Road, Normal View to the city limits, rough numbers there. And one of the major projects that we did or are going to be doing is pedestrian improvements. And this is kind of Phase 1 of the pedestrian improvements, is we really wanted to create a pedestrian link between the neighborhood and to the commercial areas. And the commercial areas around that neighborhood are primarily Old Morgantown Road and Morgantown Road. And then, we also saw the opportunity to provide pedestrian access to the park and through the park. So, that's what we're utilizing as part of this. This is going to be a connection, if you're familiar with Lampkin Park, around Field 5, the tee-ball field kind of at the back end of Woodway, be kind of the backbone. And then, from there, it's going to come down. One side's going to split off to Old Morgantown Road by the old drive-in. I was an A&W root beer whenever I was young. And then, the other side's going to go through the park by the new spray ground, around the tennis courts, basketball courts, all the park amenities, and come out down by the armory and Field 4, down on Morgantown roadside. Phase 2 will be sidewalks, which we hope to go to bid here in the next few weeks, which will then build sidewalk from that point on Woodway by Field 5, all the way back around to Glen Lilly, and will make a connection from all of Glen Lilly back through the park. So, what this enables is neighbors in the neighborhood being able to walk to the park, walk to the Dollar General, walk to KATI, walk to all the other amenities that are available along Old Morgantown and Morgantown Road, and also, the new spray ground, which we expect to generate a lot of foot traffic in Lampkin Park whenever that's constructed. So, this is our first project. We're excited about this project. It's going to be 6,000 linear feet of 6-foot asphalt pass. So, this is not a traditional walking path like we have at Caryachus or the loops at Lover's Lane where it is just walking in a circle. These are really taking you from a place to another place, a destination, while also serving a park purpose. This also serves another purpose, and if you go back to the master plan from parks, one of the things that was brought up in there was the accessibility within the parks. So, this helps achieve better accessibility to the shelters, to the playgrounds, to the park itself. So, with that, I'll entertain any questions anyone might have.
Any questions? From?
I don't remember if we've seen it. Is there a detailed plan as to where it's going to come out, near Field 4 on Morgantown Road?
Yes.
So, is it close to the tree line?
It's going to come out by the edge of the parking lot along the left-field fence of Field 4. So, it's going to actually connect to the parking lot there. And then, you're on hard surface all the way back around. And then, it's also going to go straight down to Morgantown Road by the National Guard Armory. So, it's not going to come back around that little leg that goes into Field 4.
It just feels...
No, no, no. It's going to go to the parking lot of Field 4.
In the evening. Great.
Yeah. Any other questions? Thank you all.
Roll.
Ash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2017-238.
Municipal Order Authorizing the Purchase of Titleist Golf Products for Crosswinds, Paul Walker, and Riverview Golf Courses Through Non-Competitive Negotiations with Titleist of Chicago, Illinois in an Amount Not to Exceed $80,000.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor. City has three golf courses, and at these golf courses, we resell equipment that we and we buy from various manufacturers. We're here tonight to ask you to entertain a direct contract with Titleist to purchase $80,000 worth of golf balls, to sell those to the public. So, it's a non-competitive bid, and we will recover more than $80,000 of value from those sales.
Comments or questions? Roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2017-239.
Municipal Order Authorizing the Acceptance of a Grant from the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security for 2017 Homeland Security Grant Program in the Amount of $15,600 for the purchase of personal protective equipment for the fire department.
Go move.
This is a two-part process. I think we talked about using funds to purchase personal protective gear for our especially fire department employees. We're here tonight to let you know, we received the grant, $15,600 from them, not as much as we asked, but we received 15,600. This will allow us to buy specialized bunker gear for our technical rescue squad. Jason Coulson is here. I'd also like to give an ad liby to Nick Cook for helping to do the paperwork of applying for that.
Comments or questions?
Ash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2017-240.
Municipal Order Authorizing the Acceptance of a Grant from the U.S. Department of Justice, Bureau of Justice Assistance through the Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program in the Amount of $17,460.17.
Okay.
Ash, second.
The Justice Department has a program that, for the locals, it's involving partnering with us to provide bulletproof vests for our officers. They're giving us $17,000 to help achieve that goal. That's about 50% of the cost. It's our intent, over the next two years, to replace 42 vests that are needed on a five-year rotating basis. Doug is here, if you have any questions about the program.
Comments or questions? Call the roll.
Ash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 2017-52.
Ordinance Closing a Public Right-of-Way. Ordinance Approving the Closing of an Unnamed Alley Located off Park Street Adjacent to 946 Park Street.
Go move.
Second by Perigin. This is the first reading of unanimous recommendation from Planning and Zoning. You can see where the alley is, and it was unused. Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 2017-53.
Ordinance Resoning Real Estate. Ordinance Resoning Tracks of Land Containing 0.72 acre from GB General Business to CB Central Business Located at 850 and a Portion of 866 Broadway Avenue Presently Owned by Cobblestone Capital, LLC.
Go move.
Second.
Perigin, second by Wick. Recommendation from Planning and Zoning for rezoning. Again, first reading. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Ash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 2017-54.
Ordinance Resoning Real Estate. Ordinance Resoning a Track of Land Containing 60.71 acres from RM3 multifamily residential and F floodplain to RS1D single-family residential and F floodplain Located on McFadden Station Street Presently Owned by Rivers Landing Edge, LLC.
Go move.
Second.
Perigin, second. Recommendation from Planning and Zoning on the first reading. Any comments or questions? Yes, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll go second.
In my packet, it's page 399. In your packet, I think it's page 11 of the City-City Planning Commission Minutes. On this particular item, it says, and I don't know exactly how to pronounce the lady's name, but Ms. Creck, for lack of a better way to say it, I apologize to her, ask about the binding elements that would remain until the plat is recorded.
Creck.
Creckey. Thank you. Told you I'd butcher that. I'm sorry, Ms. Creckey. Ms. Hunt explained that they will be binding elements until the plat is recorded and then will become a plat restriction to be enforced by the residences in the neighborhood. My question is, why do the neighborhood residences have to enforce the plat restrictions if the restrictions were approved as binding elements by the Planning Commission?
So, this is something that's commonly done on quite a bit of developments in the community, both city and county. So, those items are generally best done by the residents. Typically, it's building materials and the like of the things that you see there. So, typically, they become plat restrictions that are kind of function more like restrictions that you would see in a deed or in the development plan or subdivision restrictions that are typically done by those homeowners.
It has nothing to do with this particular development.
No.
But my question is, if there is a violation of those plat restrictions, what happens? Who does what?
Similar to like a homeowners' association or something like that, then they would be, I guess those homeowners would then enforce or, I guess, sue or whatever mechanism they may have to implore that person to comply with those restrictions. It would be the same thing, similar to a homeowners' association.
This is a greater point. Again, it doesn't have to do with this particular issue that I've talked about for many years and I want to continue to talk about, and that is, under the current rules, it takes a group of citizens who have to come together and agree. They have to pool their money together. They have to go out and agree on an attorney. They have to then file a lawsuit to enforce rules that a governmental body originally made. And what I would like to see us move towards is that they don't have to do that, that the enforcement agency is, in fact, the Planning and Zoning Commission or the employees of the commission, because otherwise, I'm afraid that it becomes too cumbersome for your average citizen to be able to navigate that process. citizen to be able to navigate that process.
Sure, we have a similar situation through all of these homeowners' associations. I think the statistics I, you know, have read, haven't read in a while, but that only 15% of those are functioning and successful nationwide. So I think that is certainly an issue, not only here, but across the nation. The only problem with that is, is we've yet to find anybody who's got a better solution than homeowners' associations. So a bit about the binding elements, binding elements, the planning commission cannot require or force, we can help them come up with binding elements, I guess is a good way to put it, but we don't, they're voluntary by the developer. So the mechanism that usually happens is, most common when we see is after it's more than 50% development, 50% developed, then they're either turned over to a homeowners' association, or if there is no homeowners' association, as in this case, becomes a plat restriction, or some other similar mechanism, deed restriction, those type of things. So it's a common thing, don't know if it's the best thing, but we're certainly continuing to look at that. I think we've even had discussions with city staff on other things like drainage basins and some of these other situations we have. So we are looking at that, and as we are crafting changes to, suggested changes to our zoning ordinances, we're looking at all those things and trying to come up with a better way. So it's pretty high on our radar, just don't know that there's a great solution to that issue.
So this would be similar, and you mentioned it yourself, to homeowners' associations. In a previous meeting, we talked about that we were gonna explore and come up with solutions. Is there an idea, do you have an idea of when those potential solutions will be presented, even if there's not a solution, but there's just some level of follow-up to say, this is what we've done?
Yeah, so we're, I guess internally, through planning commission staff discussions, we are crafting proposed draft legislations now, changes to our zoning ordinances. We expect to have that done, spring timeframe, so in relatively short order as those things go, and so hopefully we'll have at least the discussion and ideas to present at that point in time.
Thank you.
Yeah, I found it after reading it again, I was just looking as to who the owner of this property is. Mark Williams, is that correct?
Correct. Comment your questions. Please call the roll.
Ash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes, first reading of ordinance BG 2017-55.
Ordinance rezoning real estate, ordinance rezoning tracts of land containing 0.2516 acre from RM3 multifamily residential to RM4 multifamily residential, located at 1438 Kenton Street, presently owned by Lan and Hong Nuneun.
Move. Second.
Motion by Nash, Paragon, again, unanimous recommendation from planning and zoning for rezoning, any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Ash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes, first reading of ordinance BG 2017-56.
Ordinance rezoning real estate, ordinance rezoning a tract of land containing 0.74 acre from AG Agriculture to HB Highway Business, located at 397 Three Springs Road, presently owned by Lee, or Le Ravey, I'm not sure how to pronounce that exactly, of Kentucky LLC.
Move. Second.
Motion by Nash, Paragon, another unanimous recommendation from planning and zoning on first reading, any other comments or questions? Yes, sir.
Owners of this property.
This is, I don't know exact names, but this is Luxury Imports, they're on Three Springs Roads, it's the owners of that property.
Okay, I'm sorry.
This is where the church used to be, and they took property away from them, and they're giving some back to the art of dealership. Please call the roll.
Ash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes, first reading of ordinance BG 2017-57.
Ordinance rezoning real estate, ordinance rezoning a tract of land containing 1.16 acres from AG Agriculture to LI Light Industrial, located at 2361 Louisville Road, presently owned by Performance Feeds LLC.
Move.
Second.
Paragon, second by Williams, unanimous recommendation from planning and zoning for a small sliver of land to join a property owner, any comments or questions?
Who is owner of Performance Feeds?
Managing members listed as Tony Ferguson.
We talked about the upfront document listing a name of chairman of a board or whatever, and that way, we know who the ownership is.
Do you want us to start, and we can look that up on the Secretary of State's website and provide that, is that what you're wanting?
Well, no, when it comes from planning and zoning, in its document, you're already providing a front cover sheet.
Yes.
If you remember sometime back, if it's a corporation or so on, we wanted to know the chairman of that board, or the owner by name, under the corporate title, whatever it may be, as an example of this one.
Comment your questions. Please call the roll.
Ash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes, municipal order 2017-241.
Municipal order authorizing and approving amendments to the Bowling Green Police Policy and Procedures Manual, revision number eight, effective January 1, 2018.
Move. Second.
Ash, second by Paragon, Mr. DeFebbe.
Thank you, Mayor. The police department, as well as the fire department, have standard operating procedures, how they do their business. Those need to be amended at time to time. We're here tonight to listen to some of the amendments that Chief Hawkins would like to make. Doug?
Have brief comments for us, Chief?
I'll make them as brief as possible.
We can hear it. Katie, you hit the right button.
Thank you, Mr. DeFebbe, Mayor, Commission. As you all know, the Bowling Green Police Department has an extensive policy and procedures manual. If you've bothered to read it, it exceeds about 1,000 pages now, so it's an incredibly long document, but it is our guiding document for much of what we do at the Bowling Green Police Department. That document itself goes through an annual review process internally. It should reflect best practices of our profession, it should reflect any legal changes that have occurred, both at the state and federal level, that affect law enforcement. It also allows us to be accredited with the Kentucky Associations of Chiefs of Police, excuse me. So we continue to incorporate their recommendations as well. Also with Kentucky League of City Insurance Services, we accept input from them with regard to best practices as well. We take certainly the input from the commission and the city manager, and the review of the commission and the city manager at this point for approval. There are a number of changes, there are some ministerial changes, some typo corrections, those kinds of things. A couple of significant changes that we made in this year's updates. We have incorporated some new training requirements for officers that are off for extended periods of time, so we can reestablish their diminishable skills in certain areas. We have added, we carry a product now called Narcan, which is a drug that we use to assist drug overdose patients, to help save their lives. And then, as you all know, and our community knows, the Bowling Green Police Department was involved in an incident about a year and a half ago, that raised some questions about our practices with regard to dynamic entry of homes. And so through the process of commission review and administrative review of that, we've also made some recommendations for some changes to those processes to greater oversight of both the planning and the execution of those types of events, if and when they do occur. There are other, less significant changes, but if you'd like to address any of those, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Comment your questions.
And you've touched on it, but in reading, and it is a long document, but the fact that we are, and maybe we've been doing so for some time, and we're now just putting it into writing, but administering the opioid antagonist in overdose victims is, I think, huge, and I think things like that, it's always interesting to me, the kind of things that the city does that gets press coverage, and the kind of things that the city does that doesn't get press coverage, but I think that type of action that the city police department is willing to take, the liability associated with that, but more importantly, the life-saving measures that are associated with that are the things that ought to run on the front page of the newspaper. We have an epidemic and a crisis in the state that's not necessarily hit Bowling Green hard, but it has hit Bowling Green without question, and the fact that the police department is being proactive in their approach to that, and willing to act in, and I believe the police department always acts in a humanitarian ways, but I don't think that that's always seen, but making this kind of antagonist available to officers to administer to overdose victims is not only the right thing to do, but it's a humanitarian thing to do, and I appreciate the police department doing so.
I appreciate you acknowledging that. I will tell you that certainly the eastern part of the state suffers more from it than we do. We see it at least potentially coming our direction, and we wanted to be prepared for it. I know that we have only had it deployed in the field for just a handful of months, three or four months at this point, but I do know of at least two occasions it's been used successfully, so it's an unfortunate truth, but a truth nonetheless, and so we are prepared to at least deal with it when we come in contact with it.
Questions?
Ash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes, municipal order 2017-242.
Municipal order approving and authorizing out-of-town travel expenses for city manager Kevin D. DeFebbe to attend the 103rd Annual ICMA Conference in San Antonio, Texas.
Move. Second.
Paragon, second. DeFebbe, you have any comments?
Thank you for approving my travel.
In advance?
It's always a golden opportunity for someone in my role to have contemporaries give you wisdom and exchange ideas. This is sometimes a job in which you don't have many contemporaries around to share ideas with, so that's probably the greatest benefit of it, and I appreciate you allowing me to go.
Did we pick up another award there?
Yeah. For keeping the public informed of what we're doing and then doing it.
It's a good thing.
Yeah, I think so.
Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes, municipal order 2017-243.
Municipal order approving an agreement with Rockin B Horse Carriage LLC to provide horse carriage rides in downtown Bowling Green.
Move.
Second.
Paragon, second by Williams, just want the public to know that for this first time, with all of the improvements in Fountain Square Park, the city is going to provide for every Friday night between December 8th and Christmas, an opportunity for free carriage rides around the square, so that people can come and enjoy our Christmas decorations, and come and see what we've done in the park, and hopefully enjoy those new improvements. Any of us have any comments?
I want to do a special shout-out to Kim Lancaster, who was at WNKY this morning at 6 o'clock in the morning, and bubbly, her bubbly self, to tell the public about Rockin B Horse Carriage rides in the park. And then, when I turned over to WBKO, James Beckner was on WBKO telling the public, so it's, the word's out, and I think it's gonna be great. Bring the family.
Mentioned about the light-up. Go ahead. As the public knows, we've done a lot of work on the fountain square. This is a special year, we want to celebrate those improvements, and we want to use the annual light-up to celebrate the fountain and some of the improvements in the plaza. So mark your calendars, December 1st, I believe 5 o'clock?
5 to 8.
5 to 8.
Comment your questions. Please call the roll.
Ash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes, I stated on our agenda, we do have an opportunity for public comments at this time. If anybody'd like to step forward, please give us your name and address, so we can add it to the record. Thing note.
Good evening, my name is Brian Anderson, I'm an economics major here at Western Kentucky University. As I'm sure all of you bright minds are aware, this is the week of Thanksgiving, people all across the country are gonna be coming together to watch the Macy's Day Parade, eat roast turkey, et cetera, et cetera. Unfortunately, however, there will be many families that will not be laughing and enjoying each other's time, because of the bigoted bigness practices that we find here in this city. I'm representing Bowling Green fairness here because it doesn't have to be that way. In 1973, Washington DC became one of the first places in the country to implement the local protections for LGBTQ members of their community. Those kinds of practices must be stopped. The businesses that fire employees on basis of their identity are losing out on fantastic employees, and every year that the city fails to follow places such as Washington DC's lead, is another year that we are falling behind. Now, I mentioned earlier that I'm an economics major because there's an F-word in the field of economics fare, that many economics professors will go on hour-long rants about if you use it in their presence. But put quite plain and simply, bigotry is bad for business, and if businesses in Bowling Green want to meet the recommendations of 21st century business practices, it is imperative that we, as a city government, encourage them to do so through the fairness ordinance as outlined previously. Now, there are dollar signs that are on the side of this fairness ordinance, but to some people, it doesn't really matter what businesses say or don't say around the country because of the religious issue at heart in this commission's fairness ordinance. However, it doesn't really make much sense to, on religious grounds, deny this fairness ordinance, considering Kentucky's Religious Restoration Act, and also the fact that the Civil Rights Act hasn't exactly allowed for religious exemptions for prior discrimination on the basis of identity. So at the end of the day, it just makes the most sense for us to have this kind of fairness ordinance implemented in Bowling Green, Kentucky, not just for the businesses, not just for those who desperately want to live their own lives in Bowling Green instead of having to move to safer places, but also for the people who are left behind whenever their family members do decide to leave, for themselves and their better protections. There will be another opportunity for this kind of fairness ordinance coming up before too long. For those families that it is too late for this week, I hope you all choose wisely. Thank you.
Any comments? Any comments? All right, this is the end of the meeting, and we'll be back for our next meeting on December 5th, 2017. Thank you for tuning in.